Means order, um, we do have a quorum. Uh, take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
So moved.
I'll second that motion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carry. Uh, Chris Brown on there this morning?
He's got an fancy background.
Background, so. Hey, uh, just a little update, Mark called this morning and said some of the bridges were slippery and we sent the trucks out and I said. Tread lightly on the salt. Um, because it seemed like it was getting better. I talked to the foreman in Mitchell County here and. Things weren't icy over here, so there must be a line kind of over the western part of the county. So they're out doing a little bit of spreading. Um, hopefully not very heavy. Um, so. That being said, um. Still dealing with, uh, you know, trying to shape roads up here before it freezes, um, and the wind tower. Wind towers are hauling some heavy loads. I was out, um. Friday, they were hauling one of their big cranes just to double check on, uh. How their bridging, uh, techniques were working over some box culverts and things like that, so. Um. So I see Dan just sent a text that, uh, or a message that eight thirty-eight was an accident and eight thirty-eight hit the guardrail, so we're out doing what we can. Um. I turned in some bridge plans for three fiftieth yesterday, so that box covert is progressing, um. And the, the paving plans were turned in last week or last month, but they're good, put on this month's. Um, thing for one oh five, like I said, but we still gotta figure out funding. Um, if we can't figure out funding, we can always pull it, but they're, they're moving along as, as though we have the money to do something, so. Um, that's all I've got for you. Um, still working at home until I get my test results back, but even then I think we're supposed to. Stay isolated or, uh, quarantine for fourteen days. I don't have symptoms yet, so we'll just see how that all works out. My son still does. Um. Play by year, I guess.
Sounds good. Sounds like a safe plan.
Well, there's a lot I can do from home with a computer and a phone, so. Uh, as long as everybody else is staying healthy, the office should still be able to operate and we should still be able to do what we need to do out in this, out in the road, so. So I've got for you this morning. If you've got questions, just go ahead and answer, ask them.
I don't think so. Nope, I don't have any either today, so.
We'll check out that eight thirty-eight. Like I said, we're out trying to throw some salt down on some icy spots.
Uh, be right in that line, most of that's.
Yep, it probably would be, yep. Right by the interstate. Alright.
Thanks.
I'll stick around if you got questions.
Yeah. Yeah, uh. That's eight thirty-nine.
Okay. I just know it's three ninety.
Eight thirty-nine, three ninety, eight thirty-eight.
Eight thirty, it's just four.
Joyce, can't do.
Four hundred. Or four, or ten.
Four ten. Road between Joyce and Kansas. Yeah.
That's a bridge, like I say, I, I own a one oh five bridge and I just barely stepped on the cellar right now.
Yeah.
So. Couldn't really see it. It looked like it was wet, but.
Alright, uh, drainage. See, we have some stampboards. Come through, correct?
Too much. There's a stack of them there.
Yeah.
And checks too, I think. You just need those two up into those clips. I think.
Yeah, standpoint, thirty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars total for.
That one.
Uh, that's both. They both tell it up the same. So this must be the, or this is the invoices here. Of everything and this is the standpoint, so. Take a motion to approve the standpoint for drainage claims.
So moved.
I'll second that motion. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carry. So I gotta say, right, this is just the invoices and. Hey, and then regular claims. Questions on those, Mark?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
Make a motion to prove the claims.
Alright, there's motion to approve claims. I'll second that motion. Uh, any other discussion? All favor aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Any reports? Sheriff, sheriff's office. Motion to approve the report. Alright, there's motion to approve the report in the sheriff's office. I'll second that motion. All favor aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carry. Uh, payroll eligibility, salary changes?
Nope, nope.
We'll be seeing one.
Today.
Kirsten.
Kirsten.
Thought that maybe, maybe. Marcus, uh, leaving the circuit work. Yeah.
It's somewhere. The liquor license.
Nope.
Well, wait on the campus for five minutes. First of all. The, uh, twenty twenty general election canvas.
We should be able to run through this. You gotta go through the whole. You have, you have the canvas, you have the abstract, I have the numbers from the machines. So I have. Start with the president. There should be. Four thousand four hundred and eighteen votes total. Yeah, that's on that one. That one means. You'll have the under votes and over votes.
Oh, okay. Excellent.
So that's without.
Without.
Yeah, so you're, you're.
Okay.
But you'll be able to follow.
Better.
Yeah. Okay, so there was fifteen ninety-six for Biden and Harris. Twenty-seven thirty-eight for, um, Trump and Pence. Eight for. Roe and Rocky.
Rocky.
Yeah. Um, eight for Don, one for Ricky, seven for Howie, thirty-eight for Joe, four for Brock. Fourteen for Kanye. Four write-ins. Fifteen under votes and three over votes. Okay, US senators. Yours will show a total of four thousand three hundred and seventy-seven. Teresa Greenfield, eighteen oh three. Orange. Twenty-four, twenty-five. Rick Suer, ninety-eight. Suzanne Hursong, forty-six. Write-ins five, under votes fifty-six, over votes three. US Representative District One, um, you'll show forty-three oh eight for a total. Abby Finkenhour, one thousand six hundred and sixty-nine, Ashley Henson, two thousand six hundred and thirty-three. Write-in six, and you'll have under votes of twenty-one, twenty-four, over votes four. On State Senator District Twenty-six, you'll have four thousand three hundred and thirty-two. Um, Deb Sharper, fourteen oh one, Waylon Brown, twenty-nine, twenty-six. Write-ins five. You'll have under votes one oh two and over votes two. Total votes for State Representative District Fifty-One. Um, you'll have forty-three fifty for total votes. Um, one twenty-one, one thousand two hundred and twenty-one for Jane Gorniac. Um, three thousand one two three for Jane Bloomingdale, six write-ins, eight five under votes, one over. At some point, yeah. Yeah.
I'll come back and finish you.
Yeah, and then I got another stack too. For Dan.
I thought there was a.
Okay, um. Total votes of fourteen eleven. Um, one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight for Gary. Two hundred and thirteen for, um, write-ins. One hundred and twenty-nine under votes, zero, or no, one hundred and twenty-nine, yeah, under votes and zero over votes. And that further breaks down. Left at one oh five, or two oh five? Oh, did, you have all done. Let's switch.
I got all that.
Sorry, it.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to the, yeah, stay where you're at, and I'll, I'll jump on mine. Maybe go to this pre report, because they did all the state and federal stuff first in that one, sorry. Okay.
Which I'm on our page.
Um, Christopher McDonald, no.
She's there, she's here.
Where is she? Oh, they're out of order, okay. Um, thirty-four ninety. Um, two thousand six hundred and sixty-one, yes, eight hundred and twenty-nine, no, and nine hundred and forty-six under votes. Who's your next one?
Yeah, that worked magic.
Okay. Um, four thousand, or three thousand four hundred and eighty-three. Twenty-five seventy-eight, yes, nine oh five, no, nine forty-nine, under vote, four over vote. Christopher. Thirty-four fifty-seven, twenty-five seventy-three, eight eight four, nine seventy-five, four.
Yep.
Thirty-four fifty-six. Twenty-five twenty-eight, nine twenty-eight, nine seventy-nine, one. Okay, no, Thomas. Thomas is next. Okay, um, three thousand three hundred and thirty. Two, twenty-five fifteen, eight fifteen, eleven oh five, one. Thirty-three ninety-two, twenty-five eighty-nine, eight oh three. Ten thirty-six and eight. Thirty-three ninety-two, twenty-six twenty-four, seven sixty-eight, ten forty-three, one. Thirty-three sixty-five. Twenty-five forty-two. Eight twenty-three. Ten seventy-one. Zero.
Four.
Another personal curse.
Okay, thirty-three fifty-seven, twenty-five fifty-seven, eight hundred. One thousand seventy-seven, two. Thirty-three eighty. Twenty-five seventy-one. Eight oh nine, ten fifty-six. Yeah. Thirty-three ninety-nine, twenty-six oh four, seven ninety-five, one thousand thirty-seven, zero. Thirty-three seventy-four. Twenty-six fifteen, seven fifty-nine, one oh six two. Um, thirty-three seventy-nine, twenty-six twenty, seven fifty-nine, ten fifty-four, three. Thirty-three sixty-three, twenty-six forty-four, seven nineteen, ten seventy-two, one. Question. Three hundred, three thousand eight hundred and eighty-one, nine eighty-two, yes, two thousand eight ninety-nine, no. Five hundred and fifty-four, under votes and one over vote. Hey, now that does. Let me get back there. So. Total was fourteen eleven, Barry Hanson, one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight. There were two hundred and thirteen of write-ins, one hundred and twenty-nine under votes, zero. Over votes, and, uh. The only one that. We need to report is Mark had two hundred and five, and you'll show a scattering of eight. Yep, for two hundred and thirteen. Okay. Four thousand seventy, four thousand eight, sixty-two write-ins. Three hundred sixty-six under vote, zero over. Sheriff. One thousand, or four thousand four hundred and. Four thousand one hundred and fourteen, three thousand nine hundred and ninety. One twenty-four write-ins. Three hundred and twenty-one under, one over. Barton Township, hundred and six total, model five for first parts, one write-in, fourteen hundred votes, zero over votes. Bristol Township. One forty-nine total, one forty-seven Doug Armson, two write-ins, twenty under votes, zero over. Brookfield. Hundred and thirty votes. One twenty-six for Bill Enwell, four write-ins, thirteen under, zero over. Danville Township. One hundred and forty-four total, one forty-one for Brett Bakehouse, three write-ins, sixteen under votes, zero over. Deer Creek. Eighty-nine total, eighty-two for Mark Davidson, seven write-ins. Twelve under votes, zero over. Earl Township. There were two hundred and five. For Dwight Brons and zero write-ins, eighteen under votes, eight over. Earl Township, hundred and five total, one oh two for Lois Lawler, three for, three write-ins, fifteen under votes, zero over votes. Hartland. One thirty-four, Douglas Long, yeah, one thirty-three, there was one write-in, sixteen under votes, zero over votes. Kansas Township, seven twenty-five, one twenty-four for Larry Foley, one write-in, eleven under votes, zero over. Megan Township. Two hundred votes, two hundred for James Dobell, zero write-ins, twenty-three under votes, zero over votes. Silverlight Township. One twenty-nine, Mike Thompson, one twenty-nine, zero write-ins, fifteen under, zero over. Total votes, one eighty-four. For Union, one eighty-one for Ron Bailey, three for, or three write-ins, twenty-two under votes, zero over votes. Water Conservation, there were nine thousand twenty-two votes. Thirty eighty-eight for Harlan Helgason, thirty thirty-nine for Dennis Meyer, twenty-eight fifty-four for James Dobell. Forty-one write-ins, forty-two seventy-four under vote, and twelve over vote. County Ag Extension, there were eleven thousand five hundred and eleven votes total. There, thirty eighty-eight for Peter Julesup. Twenty-eight eighty-eight for Allison Crowe. Twenty-six thirty-six for Carla and Larson. Twenty-eight sixty-six for Jessica Lutz, thirty-three write-ins. Six thousand two hundred and five under votes and twenty-eight over. So I'll just have you sign everything after instead of taking a writing. Can we, can we back up to, um, payroll eligibility?
Do you need to prove anything on that, or just?
No.
Okay. Alright, uh, payroll eligibility for Kirsten Mondo at the sheriff's office.
Motion to approve the.
Motion to approve. I will second that motion, any other discussion? Okay, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Carry. Uh, still waiting on the road vacation, correct? I don't know, right?
Yeah.
We can get more involved, I believe. Uh, I wonder if that homeless has sent me a message. She's on a meeting this morning at eight thirty. He's looking at. R five for the state, I guess I don't quite know if that is. Or a P maybe? Or a lie?
No.
Information.
Information. Not very sure that's what, man, she's had a developer and an architect separate, uh, interest in the interchange out there.
Okay.
So she's, so she's getting more interest out there.
So let's get that stuff done. Journeys.
Right.
Yonner Jeff.
Uh, working on budget and stuff, and, um, our website should go live within the month. Hopefully, um. She's doing a lot, uh, with the virus kicking back out. She's making sure she's doing a lot more stuff virtually, uh, with people or whatever meetings she's able to, so. Kind of lay low, I think, which is at least that month. We're on a lot of people.
Faster than we are, we're accelerating faster than us.
Right, um, but yeah, the, uh. That's good, though, we get some interest out there.
Yeah.
Not at all, so.
Soon we can try to get that going, but. I don't know, takes time, but.
Um, and I don't believe Jason was gonna be on today. Jason, um. Work off that, he was waiting, he's got all the stuff done for streetlights. As far as the engineering, what they have to do, but their electrical engineer has been out quarantining. So he's waiting to get signature on that and then he can get the prices and get that done. Um, he was gonna send another email out to Jeff and to Boyd to see where we're at, because they've got everything. Boyd does, it just needs to get.
I think it's close, it just needs to get through the process.
That last little bit, and we should.
Papers, whatever it is.
Once that's done, and we get the prices of the streetlights, we'll know where we're at. So, and he was, the way he was talking, um, there's no. Uh, contingency monies were spent, so we're probably coming in, he said, hundred, hundred and fifty thousand under, what's good, we planned on, which is a good thing, so. Just be nice to get to that point where we can put a number on the lots and, uh, get them listed out, or. Get the, the public hearings done so we can settle. Um, playing zoning, I did talk to Matt Devey over in Winnebago County. Uh, he was out of town late last week, um, he's gonna try to get ahold of me this week, we'll meet up and talk a little bit. Um, he is interested, once he found out it was just the three townships, otherwise he pinned it was a, it was a whole county, because. I think he's got a day job, he's, he does some surveying or something.
Yeah.
Um, land surveying, I think is what he does, but, but once I told him that, you know, and it's not too far from him anyways, it's that portion of the county. Um, he said he would be interested in talking, just on an as needed basis type thing, so. I think that's what he is with, uh, Winnebago, he's considered part-time as needed.
Yep.
So whenever they do have something come up, he just goes and takes care of it, so. Anyways, hope to get more out of him this week and be able to talk a little bit more. Um, what was the pay? Just to.
With, with, um, with Jim, it was like eight or nine thousand dollars for the year, it was just, he was given so much money every month, or every two weeks. But with, with Jane, we just went by that, that hourly rate, and then I kept bumping it up. From there, and, um, she never, she didn't turn in hours, I don't think.
Right.
I, I think she probably worked at it a lot more than she gave herself credit for.
Right.
So I, I think it should be something that's set, but it, it's up to you guys.
Right.
Like a, not to exceed hour, you know, so many hours, I mean, or something like that. I mean, if it's over hour, you know.
Yeah.
Flat fee and all of a sudden he's full-blown doing a bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
Alright, you just pay him.
County or something.
Alright, well, that comes in real fast, then we're, then we're gonna look into, hold time that, probably take on the flood stuff, and make like a.
Yeah.
Four or five thing job, you know.
Yeah.
If that does, if that would go, then we would, you'd have to make that into one job with about four or five different titles. To cover all, to cover all that little stuff that we need to kinda try to cover, so. But yeah, I don't know, if we just set a base, you know, maybe like a base rate on it, and then once we just do, and figure that as an hourly, or this is the hourly, once you get to that amount of hours, and just start sending it in. I'm paying hourly after that.
Do you know what Winnebago pays him?
I don't. I don't, I don't know if you want to.
Per hour or?
Email.
Call them, find out.
Carla, or ask her, just shoot her an email and just see what they, how they pay him. Something like, I mean, like I say, we gotta give a base, I guess, just to, for the availability, you know, and then. Make that as, as so many hours, and once that's documented, then if there's more than that.
Kind of our own call, and a lot of calls probably don't come during.
So the thing is, it's probably just gonna be mostly the development for a while.
Because we should probably have something written out.
Yeah, when we go to offer something, we should have it set.
Right.
So I guess we can figure that out too, but.
And maybe he has a dollar in mind too, that.
Yeah.
Right. Right. Yeah, he was kinda confused on the, just the three township, it said, that's all you gotta worry about, but it's like I said, he sounded very interested after that, so. Hope they'll have more info for next week, and then maybe we can. Look at the job description and set a.
Yeah, because I have no clue what the workload is.
And I see that was advertised, has there been any interest whatsoever? No?
Okay.
Didn't think so, otherwise we probably would have seen that, but. Okay. Um, department head discussion, I see Teresa said something about.
Imagery.
Damage in project. Yeah, imagery, she got invoices for that. Um. On the picture of proof of completion, so you turn that stuff into, oh, November thirteenth? Ooh, pushing it, aren't we? Yeah, get that stuff in, because. Yeah, let me get that from W C D A, we don't wanna lose that one. Uh, any other department heads have anything?
AJ just does the chair for the, the center's office, I just wanted, you know, I got fourteen apps in, ten of them were pretty good. We're gonna narrow it down to six, and I'm starting today and then Thursday on, on the, um, Jones position.
Oh, okay.
So.
Um, and then, uh. Obviously, that ought to go through the conference board, or not?
Uh, basically, no.
It won't, you can, you can.
Yeah, as long as I stay in budget.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, okay. Well, that sounds good, then do we have one coming up in December then?
No, we're in January.
January, okay. And it was coming winter time.
Budget time.
Yeah.
Jackie wants to hear about it.
So we all in here. Okay, perfect. See anybody else out there with any questions?
The, uh, the cyber part of the election went really well this year, there was not a lot of actionable stuff, and hats off to Jackie for setting up her new election website. The, uh, the cyber part of the election went really well this year, there was not a lot of actionable stuff, and hats off to Jackie for setting up her new election website.
That's nice, it's a nice website.
Took a lot of traffic.
Was a lot cleaner than, you know, it was, I mean, it was just.
Did it, I mean, you looked at it, did a lot of people use it, or at least look at it and do it?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the, the results on it, the metrics on it were fantastic.
Right, good, exactly, I looked at it, just when you mentioned it, I scrolled through it, and like, wow, this is actually just user-friendly, simple, here's the question, do you always wonder? And yeah, it was kind of nice.
And I tried to push it out to like, I said, hey, city clerks, will you look at this and make sure that the information for the cities is right, and I pushed it out to the school and stuff like that, so.
And also, I mean, something like that, hopefully the cities would put a link on their, on their website to go to, you know, jump to ours, and, and then they could just get out of there first question.
And all the forms are hooked up and everything, so
Good.
People can get their own absentee ballot requests, instead of getting
Right.
millions of them in the mail.
Right, maybe.
Yeah, that probably won't end either, but they, they would have a more trusted, trusted site, if they'll follow it.
We followed a lot of, uh, social media traffic from that site, too, so I thought it worked really well. The only, the only issue we had was if you were on, and this is a weird one, if you had LTD broadband as your internet provider. It, it, they couldn't get to the site, because CloudFlare, which covers a lot of those, yeah, it's, it's the cybersecurity thing that we implemented this year. For some reason did not like that LTD broadband, and, and I can see why, just because of the way it's set up, it's, it's not one network, it's all these little micro networks put together, so. And I, and I did apologize profusely to the gentleman, and he was able to get on with, with 4G with his cellphone, but it was just one of those weird things that, that popped up.
You get them all the first time, you're pretty lucky, so.
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
And Neapolitan Labs was awesome to work with, I, I didn't do very much, I, I just had to review a bunch of stuff, but I, I was nervous about even pulling the trigger right now, but I thought it would help, so I, I, I'm glad I did, but
No, that's good.
They, they did most of the legwork, and they were very good to work with.
And it's, I mean, the Secretary of State's office throwing the rules at us at the last one, I mean, it should fulfill a lot of those, those requirements, so.
That nice of them.
Yeah, it was kind of short order or short notice, but at least
Yeah.
future now, I mean, everything else coming up, it's, it'll really work out, but I'm glad it didn't.
And we got to use Hubble money for it, so.
Yeah, good deal.
Yeah.
That's what it's for, use it when it's there.
Well, thanks to you guys for doing
Yeah.
getting through this election, the girls upstairs, and everybody else that helped, I mean, it was.
My coworkers that would actually come out when everyone was freaked out about COVID, because we still had to vote people with COVID.
I know.
And that just.
I saw some, saw some car site stuff at Manly, when I was in there. Um, and it was, oh, it must have been ten or twelve people in there, I was there, it sounded like it was fairly steady, man.
Did you see it in full gowns and everything, or was it just somebody that just needed assistance?
No, I, I guess I didn't pay attention to that.
Yeah, there's that, too.
Um, but everybody, you know, obviously was in there, and keep your ink pen going through, and they were sanitizing pens, I mean, they were doing a great job, that I saw, so.
EMA did fantastic, too.
Yeah.
Mark followed us around and did all the BP and stuff. Yeah, I was.
And he kept me out of trouble with the computer stuff big time.
Computers all worked okay, it was soon for the most part.
Yeah, we really didn't have that many technology issues at all.
Good.
Which was a little.
Rare, occasionally.
This was the one.
Yeah, I'm glad this one only happens every four years.
Yeah, no kidding.
It's ridiculous.
And, uh, the special then, that's March.
You open for March.
Thurs.
I was gonna say.
Give me another week. Get it figured out, I, I just gotta get the, I gotta get the, um, calendar figured out, but, uh, we can actually have it sooner, I just gotta figure it out. To get the. Gonna get it cranked out as quick as I can.
No, it's fine, I.
Oh, and the sheriff also was, it was crucial.
Oh, sorry, I, I apologize, yes, he went above and beyond and got stuff out for me, and the reserves got the stuff back that night, and yes, every, everybody helped, and it was very appreciated.
I thought the sheriff
Yes.
was very, yeah, I, I.
It was very prompt, and, yeah.
We should replace UPS and just do the sheriff.
Could do that.
Get him a bunch of bread trucks.
A little more ink on for the county.
Start a UPS station right outside.
Yeah.
I love my UPS guy, though, he always gets me my stuff.
Well.
Yeah, he's pretty nice, too.
All right, Supervisor Weekly, Mark.
We just, uh, had Iowa Workforce Talk, and again, last week, and we're, we've got all our, I think, our stuff in order, we, it was a really short meeting for once, we were doing it out there in less than an hour, and everything's falling into place real nice for us, so. Kudos to some pretty good leaders in that group, or a couple guys really took on some things and, and got some stuff done, so we're in line, we're gonna continue to have the weekly meetings here, just to make sure everything is, but we've at least we beat our date, and, and we're, we're all okay that way, so. Um, and not that this was last week, but I did have a public health meeting yesterday, we kind of called an emergency meeting, and our Dr. Seem called an emergency meeting, and just, uh, we'll be getting it on the website, and we're putting a letter together, it'll be in the paper and stuff, too, just really encouraging people to, if you haven't got, get your flu shots, because the hospitals don't need to be overwhelmed anymore. Yeah, from what I understand, Mercy's pumped full of COVID patients already, I'm sure Mayo is, too, um, and we don't need you know, I know, people's beliefs or whatever, but it, it doesn't hurt, so we're gonna be encouraging that, along with, you know, continued social distancing, and wearing masks, and things like that, when you're out in public places, just to try to, try to lessen the severity of this stuff here, and, and we, we truly want to keep our kids in school, that's another thing we're really focused on, because Dr. Seem had talked to an educator that said it's, you know, nothing against homeschooling, that's not the issue here, but for the general public that's never done it, it's really messing up some kids, because they, there's no focus at home, you know. I, I don't know how parents that both work would ever have any time anyway, and to, to do it properly, you know, you can't do it in the evenings, you can't do it in mornings, you gotta do it during the day, which affects you, so. Anything we can do, we, you know, we appreciate it, we can't mandate anything, but, uh, that's where we're at, so.
And you know Mercy's, I've heard they're like thirty-three percent, third of their patient beds right now.
Right, well, they're using, I heard, I understand, they're using, you know, the NICU, I mean, or, you know, all the, everything, they're putting people wherever they can get them, Peds, and yeah.
They had it all set up, and then they went back to normal, and then they're going back to that again, so.
So, yeah, so anything to help is, you know, we, we just all need to do a part, I guess, so.
Yeah, correct.
There was some counties talking about going back to appointment.
If that's what you gotta do here, do it, because, uh, you know, it just, just make a standard, I guess, but we need to keep, we need to, you know, we need, we need somebody in every department.
No.
That doesn't mean we need to have public contact all the time, either.
I like my doors.
I don't, I saw that, that's great, that's fine.
Is that a, I mean, now probably isn't a bad time, election's over, tax, taxes are done, I mean, if I have to go to appointments, it wouldn't be a bad time to do it. Kind of slowed up for a few months until the next batch of taxes are due, and come March or whatever, but.
I think we'll see a bunch of counties going that way here in the next week or two.
And we're talking about rotating, at least me and June, just, one person gets it in our office, we all got it, and I mean, that's just because we're so close.
It's the same way over here, so, I mean, and I think we need to do the best we can to keep at least one person in office every day. With nothing else answering phone calls, you know what I mean, so.
Well, and you guys could call it that we just keep the outside door shut.
Do you want us to do that, if it is, we need to put it on the agenda for next week, then.
Is, is it time for that yet, or not, is that what other counties are doing?
The discussions are out there.
I think a lot will happen this week. So I think we need that on an agenda for next week, and we can talk about that more.
Because we're probably getting the aftermath of whatever people did for Halloween and Thanksgiving, that's coming up, Christmas is coming up, New Year's is coming up.
Thanksgiving's coming, and election, I mean, there was just a hole again in the last two weeks, you know, maybe it's something we need to look at, because employee safety is important, so.
Let's just, let's put that on the agenda for, I think, as a discussion, and we can see what happens this, this week, and what, what else is going on around in our area, because it's.
But I do think we need to look at making sure that somebody's in every department, whether it's one person or not, I don't think shutting down a complete apartment, you know, it's not, public contact, that's different, but.
But people that are home need to be working.
That, too, absolutely, we've discussed that earlier.
Everybody's pretty well set up yet, right, I mean, they were.
We can re-plug in.
I tell you, from my experience from last time, my employees and myself was very productive, I mean, not being interrupted, I did.
Well, there's something to that, isn't there?
You can dig into projects and not be, and so I felt it was very productive.
My wife saw that out working at home, even with our daughter, um, this summer, that she, it actually showed at work she was more productive, because she didn't have interruptions, because she shares an office with a lady. And then you got everybody that works in that area walks by, and somebody says hi, you know, she did not get those interruptions, even with a six-year-old at home, she was able to get more stuff down at home, it's, it's weird, but.
I can get a lot done, and we're productive on Zoom meetings, too.
I'm more productive with less people that are in the courthouse, so.
Well, because you're not bouncing around, that's what.
Yeah, we just stay in our corners.
Well.
On the weekend.
Focus on the task at hand, instead of the task of coming at you.
Yeah, um, yeah, I didn't tap anything last week, I did have last night, night call, uh, Zoom meeting, just kind of business as usual, introduced their new director, Myrtle Nelson, which she's worked there for quite a few years anyways, but um, and I did see in the newsletter, they had hired someone to replace Myrtle, but she wasn't, she might have been on the meeting, but she wasn't, I didn't see her, yeah. Um, but they did announce her in their, their newsletter, quarterly newsletter that came out, but.
And they, or they had the, was it a camp cat grant, or whatever, the, the Northwood?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's cool, too.
Yep, 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 they didn't recognize that, uh, in their newsletter, and Northwood got their grant for the.
Oh, for the.
Activity center, was it four hundred and some thousand dollars?
Yeah. Yeah. Twenty-seven, four thirty, somewhere in there. They have real good, real good luck with that, so.
It's a pretty good grant, something like that.
Right, yeah, yeah, and, uh, yeah, they did have a little Zoom retirement party for Joe Myrie, so. He's on his, he's, he's partially retired anyways, like you said, he's on half days until December or something like that, so, using up his time he had built up or whatever, so. I see him out driving, plays a fun a lot, so.
Well, no kidding, Mr. Energy.
Yeah, so, he was out, he was out golfing this weekend, I was out the course, it was nice out, him and his, his grandson or something, out there. But that's all I had, got some more coming this week. Anything else for the agenda next week, other than our discussion on the courthouse?
Yeah.
December seventh, a month on our urban revitalization, that all got posted, I'm assuming, right?
Yep. And the newspaper, mail to the people.
Ready?
This is good to work with.
Yeah, that's good, he's, obviously he just did one, and he's good on that stuff, so. It's perfect, all right, if nothing else, then I'll take a watch to adjourn. I'll second that motion, I'll favor I.
All right.
All right, media's adjourned, thank you.